Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for August first, 2022. If you would please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today in thanks. And thanks for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. And thanks for our school system, for our county, our community, and for all those involved that support our students, our teachers, and our staff. We ask your blessings as we begin this new school year. Lead us, guide us, show us the way. These things we ask Jesus' name.
Amen.
Apologies to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, citizens address the board. Do we have it? No one. Okay. No one signed in, so at this time, we'll turn it over to Dr. Pulis.
Yeah, would you mind if we brought item E1 up to the top, now that you're...
Okay.
And if I could ask, Mr. Mack, would you come and to the front of the podium? And Mr. Mack is new to our county. I think you've all read in the paper a little bit about him. I thought it prudent since he's got these grand ideas going on here in McIntosh, so maybe you probably should be able to see his smiling face and see what it entails, so.
All right, thank you for allowing me this opportunity. My name is Prescott Mack. I am from Dallas, Texas. I actually currently am the owner of the Dallas Skyline, which is another minor league professional team in the same league that I plan on bringing the Coastal Georgia Buccaneers into. The league is called the Basketball League. It's called the TBO, it's really lazy name, I don't know. But it's a league nationwide that has this year forty-four teams and has plans to grow going into this March twenty-twenty-three season to have sixty teams. And with Coastal Georgia being one of those sixty. My goal here was because I got married to a Darien native. And when we chose to move to Georgia, I wanted to bring what I love to do and what I've kind of built in Dallas here to McIntosh. My focus was to stop here in McIntosh, which means if I could play here in McIntosh, it means I had to partner with MCA. Because there's the only gym I can have, right? So, a little bit about the league. The league requires its teams to be a part of their community. That's the way we compete with the NBA, with the G League and other minor leagues around it. Our organizations and our markets have to be a pillar to the community that we're part of. It was a little bit more difficult in Dallas, but I found suburban areas in Dallas to make sure that we were reading to kids in school. We were a part of the Boys and Girls Club. We founded an organization in Dallas called Kings Academy where we took men and educated for eight weeks. We had a different curriculum of how to change a tire, how to cook, how to change oil. Different, every week was a different lesson for these young men to learn. And that was just one of a lot of things that we did in the city of Dallas. We did pretty good in Dallas, being that it's twenty-two pro organizations of all sports and us being the smallest and the only black owned. We did really well. We averaged about five hundred games a game, which is good in Dallas. And we lasted for three seasons and still going. So, for here, for McIntosh, my goal is to bring this organization here in order to be a bigger pillar in this community, which a pro basketball team can do so much. It can, for you guys here in the school board, me taking ten young men, basketball players that can dunk, that can do all these crazy things athletically, to come read to their kids in school, your kids in school with Todd Grant, or to come to a pep rally at the middle school, or to work out with the high school basketball team, could do a lot for these kids in this community. And also having me here that's been around this game and traveled around the world using this game. My goal and my, I guess, ministry is to show kids that you can use this ball, both the football, baseball, and basketball, to do whatever you want to do, but you don't have to play it. So, I feel like my testimony is guys saw me, like he had me as a player, but he was showing me like, you can, you can play this game, that's one thing. However, why would I make you a player when I can make you the only? And so, that, that me being thirty-one years old owning a professional basketball team is something that's kind of unheard. So, my goal is to teach kids, hey, your brain can still use this ball. This ball is still my life. But it's taken me to countries that I never would have known that I would be able to see. The other thing that this organization can do is give us something to do that's after school. That's outside of whatever, but I'm, again, I'm an outsider, so I don't know what normally is done here. But I don't see many skating rinks here. I don't see many, I know they're building the park in the right center, but this is something else that they can come in and they can see and enjoy and be a part of. Whereas they can't touch Trey Young at Atlanta Hawks, but they can touch our guys, right? So, our guys will come in, they're professional basketball players. They play overseas. Some of them will play on TV at the TBT. If you guys know the basketball tournament that's been on ESPN lately. Some of them even move on. We've had three guys in the last year move on from our league to the NBA. So, these can be kids, I mean, these can be guys that come in, that your kids are able to be around and touch and see and make relationships with in order for, and when they go play in the NBA, they're like, oh, I know him. And lastly, one of the, one example of a big impact that this organization can have on your kids is, let's say little Johnny is having a tough week at school. Because of my goal to be in touch with you guys, Dr. Pulis, and all the teachers, I can get a phone call and say, hey, Johnny's struggling, and can you, can you do something? And I can call our point guard, and our point guard can go have lunch with that particular kid. And when that particular kid is sitting there with the point guard of the Coastal Georgia Buccaneers, wow, like now all of a sudden he's a pretty cool kid. That's just something small that we can do to impact this community, not, let alone fundraising opportunities, different things for internships, teaching, like that's, Logan wrote an amazing story in our newspapers, but that's a part of the professional basketball, it's journalism. So, you don't have to want to play basketball. You can want to be a journalist. You can want to be a photographer. You can want to do videography. You can want to do medical stuff, be a doctor and learn how to stretch people and be physical therapists. All of that can be internship opportunities for our middle school, as well as our middle school. So, I came here today to kind of introduce myself to you all, show that I'm not just some random person that's coming to bring something that's unrealistic here. It's something that is, I feel it is more of a service to McIntosh than something that we're trying to get from McIntosh. The tickets we sell, it's great we can operate, but the service that we can do in the community is what I want you guys to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Mr. Mack, excuse me. What's your, y'all's schedule? Y'all play from when to...
We play March, and then if we make it through playoffs, our, the championship of the league just ended the last week of, or the first week of July.
Oh, okay. In the spring.
So, regular season ends in May. So, it's a three-month season, a pretty short season. Twelve home games, so we'll play twelve games at MCA unless we have some scrimmages or extra games we scheduled. Twelve away. Our division will be the Southeast Division with Atlanta, Tampa, Tallahassee, Orlando, Gulf Coast, Fayetteville, North Carolina, Raleigh, North Carolina, and it's two now, and we're the tenth.
I guess players can come from anywhere?
Players will. The goal is to find housing here, and players will come from all over the world.
Right, right.
Last year, my team in Dallas had a player from Japan, flew from Japan to play with us, which helped us go global, and it was an amazing opportunity for him as well as us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind as well, if we could move item C1A and B forward.
Okay.
If I could ask Deputy Corry Stark and Corporal Brandon Finley, if you'd like to come up to the front here, please, and... Come out over here and let's face the audience if you don't mind. About two weeks ago, I heard about an incident. Of course, you know, oftentimes information flows really quick and particulars are always distorted as far as what takes place. But I heard about an incident that took place, and I started digging a little bit more into finding out what exactly happened. I'm not going to get into great detail regarding the specifics of it, other than to say this. These two gentlemen, because of their alertness, their unique sense of just knowing that something wasn't right, and just their professionalism, stopped an incident from taking place in this county. And I would tell you again, then stepping forward and then seeing something saved lives that particular day. I'm proud to be able to up here and recognize them for what they did without getting into too far into the details of it. But they could have driven by it. They could have said, oh, well. But they had that sense that particular day that something wasn't right, pulled over and took care of it. They did something in a professional manner, and as a result of that, we have young men who are still alive, and we have treatment being provided, and we have a safe community and a safer community as a result of that. I'd like to read the certificates so that you get another sense of this. Certificate of recognition presented to Deputy Corry Stark on August first, two thousand twenty-two, for your keen alertness, unique intuition, and professional response to a potentially fatal situation that ultimately saved the life of others in McIntosh County on May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. And that's signed by myself and Board Chair, Ms. Brighman. So, I'd like to present that to you, Deputy Stark. And then, sir, I also want to do the same thing, but I want to read it as well because I think it's important for you to also get your recognition. Certificate of recognition presented to Corporal Brandon Finley on August first, two thousand twenty-two, for your keen alertness, unique intuition, and professional response to a potentially fatal situation that ultimately saved the life of others in McIntosh County on May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. And signed again by Mr. Brighman and myself. Well, I mean, if you can get the entire board to come around. All right, I'd like to offer an opportunity if you all like to sit down.
My corporal. Well, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. We get to receive this recognition. But we all do it for fun. It's our job to put it in.
Thank you. Deputy Stark, give it.
Yes, either way, I'd like to say thank you very much for this, Board. Thank you very much. You don't get recognized very often. It's very special to us. With that being said, it was mainly the sheriff who had the foresight, just look ahead, deploy us to the location we need to be at. Under the rank or direction of Corporal Finley, he deployed me in certain places and I'm able to, by able to recognize the situation before it developed, and together we were able to resolve it, if you will. So, again, thank you very much for this. I do appreciate it, and I think where the all credit goes to the sheriff for being fore, being foresight and actually seeing what happened and putting us where we need to be.
Do your spouses see it? Someone want to come up and get a quick picture? Come on. Hey, Chief, you want to join?
Oh, come on, Chief. Thank y'all.
We love to support our law enforcement, and we appreciate the cooperatives and our collaboration. Chief, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, I think we're back on track for an approval of your agenda. Thank you, Mr. Mack.
Thank you, Mr. Mack.
Thank you. Okay, item number four is approval of our work session agenda. Can I have a motion? Motion by Mr. McGyver, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. McDonald. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Mr. McGyver and Ms. McDonald. You're welcome. All right, at this time, I'll turn over Dr. Pulis for our items of information.
All right, so goal area one, student success. I'd like to ask Ms. Sheets and the individuals from Todd Grant to step forward, and let's talk about GMA's data.
Well, who would you like to go first? Because mine is the overview of the proficiency.
Why don't you hit your square real quick? I've asked Ms. Sheets to come up. You know, we talked last time, a lot of the information we had was unofficial. But in this case, this is a no longer embargo. I don't know what that is.
I feel like y'all need to turn around. Oh, you have a straight mic, right?
Yeah.
I knew that.
We high class.
All right. So, Dr. Pulis has asked me to put together a comparison between two thousand nineteen's data and then our, just our recent data. So, the great thing about that is two thousand nineteen was pre-pandemic. So, that's how our students were performing prior to. And these charts, what we, when we say proficiency, we just mean reasonable. So, none of our twos are included, none of the ones are included. So, we're comparing here, this is third grade ELA, and this is comparing two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two. And you can see Todd Grant versus the RISA versus the state. And so, we're very proud of the growth, especially with the pandemic for our students and our teachers. I'm just so glad for them because they worked tirelessly for those kids, so it's great to see this data.
So, we beat the RISA?
We beat the RISA in third grade, and watch out state because here we come. All right, in fourth grade, we did not beat RISA or state, but you can see we still made great gains. And again, watch out because it's not really that far.
We made gains when they both lost.
That's exactly right. And so, we continue to make these exponential gains, and you know, to make gains or face a pandemic. I'm really excited about that. And then here's fifth grade ELA. Look at that growth. And what I love about that is that's a compilation of third, fourth, and fifth grade, you know, wait, really, kindergarten, pre- kindergarten. So, again, we beat the RISA and watch out state. So, this is going to go to, we're saying the elementary schools, so we're going to math now. And this is third grade math. And third grade math, we dropped a little. Everybody dropped two. They dropped a lot.
So, the state dropped by nine, and we dropped by a couple of, five.
So...
The RISA dropped by eleven.
Right.
So, again, not a significant decline.
As a percentage, we dropped a lot less.
And we're doing some things to shore that up. We've gotten some really good professional running in math this year. So, it's been a good growth for us. And then fourth grade, didn't beat our RISA or state, but that growth is, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. That is, I'm so proud of that growth. And then there's fifth grade. I think fifth grade's furthest away. It's still, we still made good gains, so I'm not complaining. But we are rolling out a regalia fifth grade this year, so I'm hoping to see even more gains next year. Okay, now we'll move on to the middle school. So, this is sixth grade ELA.
So, the RISA dropped by ten. We dropped a half a mile again, so, yeah, could be...
Right. Right. But look at our seventh grade. It's amazing, really.
We beat the, tied the state?
Tied the state.
We beat, yeah. We beat the RISA and tied the state. And then eighth grade beat our RISA. Watch out state.
We're close.
Excited about that. And we'll move on to math, I believe. Yes, sixth grade math. Now, if you'll look in two thousand nineteen, we still did, we're doing a good job. We beat our RISA and state in sixth grade math then. And we beat them again this year by tie, tied the state. So, I've got sixth grade math teachers pretty consistent in our school. She does a really good job. Seventh grade math had great gains, and this particular teacher, he's really been working hard. So, I'm very proud of him because he ended up beating RISA. Well, I say he, you know, his students really did it. But he's been working, and it's been great to see this growth as a seventh grade math teacher. And there's our eighth grade math. Look at that growth. Wait, that's the wrong chart. Hold on. It says TGE.
I think that's just a mislabel.
Yeah.
It's been everyone, yeah.
It has?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take that. Thank you for pointing that out.
It's just a mislabel and not one called.
Are they all on TGE?
Yeah, they have, for the most...
Probably going to be like that way in high school, too. Did you get that on TV? Is that on TV?
Keep going.
All right, eighth grade science, that one's in. Okay. So, you can see our eighth grade science scores beat RISA and state. Eighth grade social studies. Now, we're moving on to high school.
So, tied the state, little above the state, and beat the RISA in the...
That's right.
They both failed.
And there's our algebra one.
Wow.
Our biology.
Pretty consistent.
Right, it was. And then our US history. Now, this does not include the AP students.
It does not include the AP student? So, the board knows AP, they've made a shift in AP, so that if a student takes that, whatever their grade is in the course, it equates to the level of proficiency. So, if they end up with a, I think, a ninety to a hundred, then it becomes a four. If it's eighty to eighty-nine, then it's a three.
And for the community, so I'm really proud of our McIntosh teachers. And our students, too, for just having that mental resiliency.
Thank you, Chief. The next part of this is a quick overview from Todd Grant regarding their literacy initiatives.
Okay, the first slide I'm going to share is our phonics male text grading. This tells us again, this is our running record app. It tells us again what levels our kids are at and the goal they should be. So, let's just use kindergarten for example. They should be an A through a D. So, the data I'm going to share with you just a moment, it is A on grade, in the grade band or above. But that means if they're still a level A at the end of the year, they're still in the grade band. So, it doesn't necessarily mean they're on grade level. They should be at a D by the end of the year, level D. All right, so this is comparing two thousand twenty with the first year. We did running records right before we had to leave for the pandemic. So, this is the two thousand twenty end-of-year data versus two thousand twenty-two data. As you can see, we made improvements even though of all the pandemic situations going on. So, below the grade bands, we had forty-two percent in two thousand twenty, and now, I mean, fifty-seven percent, now we have thirty-nine percent. On the grade bands, we had twenty-three percent in two thousand twenty, now we have thirty-two percent on the grade bands. And then above the grade bands, in two thousand twenty, we had twenty percent, now we have twenty-nine percent of our students.
It's a lot of maintenance.
This is usually how you guys see the running record data. And so, this is the spring of twenty-two, that we just did this current year. But I put two thousand twenty on there and two thousand twenty-two, and instead of breaking the grade band and above, I put them together. So, you can see the comparisons.
So, is this, this beginning of independent level, that chart there where it says there are eleven students at double A? Is this at the beginning or the end of the year?
End of the year.
All right, so, again, by the end of the year, we really want them closer to a D?
Okay. Yes, they should be at a D.
And just to bring to the attention of the board again, we identified that twenty-five percent of our kindergarteners do not participate in Head Start or pre-credit. And so, that's a challenge, so it becomes incumbent upon us to work extra hard.
Yes. And then this one is our third grade, my son comparison between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-two. So, if you look, in two thousand nineteen, level ones, we had forty-one percent at level ones, and we dropped to thirty-eight percent. So, that was, we want to see a drop in that category. And then level twos, we went from thirty-two percent to twenty-eight percent. So, we also want to see a drop in that category, and we want to see an increase in the next two. We went from twenty-five to twenty-eight percent and from two percent to five percent for third grade. This is third grade ELA, Georgia my son comparison between tall grade and RISA and state. In two thousand nineteen, at level ones, we had forty-one percent, and now we have thirty-eight percent. Again, we do want to see a drop there, and we are more aligned with what the RISA and state did. This is our level two, two thousand nineteen again versus twenty-two. We had a good drop from thirty-two to twenty-eight, and again, aligned with what RISA and state did, and tied RISA. And we actually beat the state in level twos. Here's level three. We actually beat the state in RISA for level threes in third grade. And then the level fours. So, we went from two percent to five percent at level fours in third grade. The next slide is percentage of students who are proficient at level threes and level fours. Todd Grant had thirty-four percent, RISA had thirty-two percent, and state had thirty-six percent. So, again, we beat RISA, the little threes and fours, and almost tied with the state. And this is a slide about let's all stretch fans. They correlate to the student's readability level and indicate it takes, excuse me, difficulty. And this is our third grade, let's all, third grade, let's all should be a five-twenty to an eight-twenty. And the, this is the comparison of below the stretch band, within the stretch band, and above the stretch band, between tall grade, RISA, and the state.
So, we're close.
So, we, below the stretch band, we're at the same... So we, below the stretch band, we're at the same, when we're above, we're, we beat the Risa. And above, we beat the Risa and almost is the same.
Are there any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The reason we place so much focus on third grade, obviously, third grades had transitioned from learning how to read to reading, how to learn. So there's a huge change there as well as the end of third grade. A lot of places use third grade data to determine future graduation rates and also how many prisons. It's unfortunate number to, to look at.
Well, it says a lot, um, about our teachers, uh, and our administrators, um, you know, just getting the job done. And, uh, we, uh, we've been needing a, a shot in the arm, so I think this is it.
We are, we are on the right course. We just will not relax on our laurels. We're gonna work hard and we've had that discussion. I'm excited. I'm praying we're gonna have a great school year. We're gonna put COVID behind us and we're gonna continue to roll up our sleeves and give it some. Thank you for your presentations tonight. All right, so goal area two, organizational effectiveness. If I could ask Mr. Masa, if you'll just come up just briefly, tell us what you've done with the strategic plan. If you are, welcome to stay if you'd like, or you could sit here for another hour.
You know y'all have a long day tomorrow.
Come on.
Except Elsie.
You obviously missed where I was pointing.
Great evening, board. I'd like to come before you to talk to you about the strategic plan. We've worked really hard on our strategic plan. We've had inputs from our, um, teachers, from our leadership team and from the community. And we've put together a document that I think that we can build on. Strategic plan is a living, breathing document that we will be working on checking off our goal areas and our strategies as well as making adjustments as we move forward. So as you see it before you, doesn't mean that that's what is written in stone. You can always make adjustments as we move forward. I think that it represents what, um, the major areas that we need to address moving forward. And, um, it was done with a lot of collaboration, a lot of heartfelt thought and planning into what's gonna move Macintosh forward. So take a look at it and, um, if you have any questions, let me know.
And basically, it's time to, to move on from the development of it to implementing it. So we're gonna ask the board to, uh, hopefully approve it with your input next board meeting. And then that becomes our strategic plan that we continue to monitor. All right, thank you, Mr. Masa.
Thank you.
All right, the next item under goal area team is a need to transfer five hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and forty-six cents from the Georgia Fund One account to the general operating account. And the reason that particular number's there is due to item number three, which is we need to make our ABM payment effective one September, I believe, in that amount. So this is the, um, again, the, the lower amounts that we have, but we're building towards having to make that first one point two million. Was that next year or year after?
Year.
Year after. So I would ask if the board would approve that. Do you don't need that right now, do you, Tanner? Do you need that tonight? Okay, good. We'll ask the board to look at that for next week. Next item up here is our public hearing to set the village rate. Um, can you pull up the five-year document, please? And again, if you will, um, if you'll look at that, we've had discussions already regarding this and I would just ask the board, based on numerous considerations, but primarily, um, the potential that we're entering a recession. Uh, the potential that, you know, with a recession, we have numerous things that happen such as job losses and changes in cost of various items and lack of items. Uh, the fact that we've had a huge inflation rate of late that does appear to be going down anytime soon. I would recommend that we keep the village rate where it's at. And that is a safe approach to this at this point and with all those things we just talked about as well. We project a ninety-three percent collection rate. If, if things do take place, that number might fall. And the bad part of that is it's a projection. And so we only know what we know right now with the data that's there. This data that came up, can you, uh, can you pull up the next document for me, please? Can you make that bigger for us? So basically, the way this runs, uh, the digest did increase, but when you take a look at this number here, uh, I've been told that mine's moving all over the place, but this number right here, that number is the re-assessment of existing real property number. Uh, and when I talked to Mr. Payne, Mr. Payne indicated that they did look at all property in the county and they reassessed and assigned a, a higher value per square foot. With that also comes the potential for additional appeals. And so as, as they, as we move forward, we don't know what the collection rate will actually be based on that in the projections. And again, um, we've had a long discussion about it. Technically, if you looked at this number, we should roll back to fourteen point six. I think a safer bet at this point would be to stay at sixteen point nine. Any questions from anybody on any of that? If not, can you pull up the, uh, the last document, I believe, has the dates on it again? That one, you can use that one there, I believe. Yeah, the dates are listed there if you make it a little bigger. We have to hold three public hearings. It's technically an increase even though the village stays the same. And so we will hold those meetings if the board agrees on August the eleventh. We'll hold two board meetings, one at noon and one at six. And then on August the eighteenth, we'll hold one at nine AM in the morning. And at that point, um, then the board would make a, a decision on what the actual military would be. We would then send the board to the county for inclusion in their board meeting so that it can be sent to the state before the September deadline. You see the write-up that's in there? Uh, again, this is, um, approximately for a two hundred thousand dollar home, that it would be an increase over the course of the year of a hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Can you put the next document up? These, these have to go in the actual newspaper? That one right there, if you make it larger. Um, and again, as we talk about these, these are drafts that the board would like to look at them, but the impacts that I just mentioned, um, on top of the fact that again, with, with a slowing of an economy also means your East Bloss money will likely also be reduced. And we know our impact of the potential of a, a reduced East Bloss. We do also have projects that we need to continue with, within the district. And we want to make sure that we stay recession-proof as best as possible tied to a bare minimum workforce that we're looking at right now. There, you can see by the scores, they're getting the job done and we need to stay that way. Any questions at all on the setting of the village and the dates that we have?
Just to reiterate, this is, we're not raising more. We're leaving it.
That we're going to leave the village.
Leave the village.
Technically, we are not going with the rollback, so it is considered a tax increase that we're, therefore, we have to hold three hearings.
What's the, um, what's the county commissioner's doing?
My understanding, again, is that they're gonna stay the same as well. Any other questions on this? If not, we'll get this advertised and we'll, we'll set up for the meetings. If I could, um, ask for a vote, Madam Chair, just to be able to advertise this.
Okay, superintendent recommends advertising our meetings, let me pull up dates real quick, which will be August eleventh at noon and six PM and August eighteenth at nine AM. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hewlett, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Struggle. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, the next item up here is discussion of the July twenty twenty-two financial report. Ms. Franklin, if you could step forward, please.
Good evening. The general operating account, uh, we began the month of July with just over two million dollars. We have receipts of one point two million and disbursements of one point six million, leaving us with a ending balance of one point six five million in the general operating account. Onto general fund revenues, page twenty-five. So we have a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars in general fund revenues, which is point nine percent of our budgeted fifteen point three million. As you well know, we are still accruing tax revenues and, uh, Department of Education revenues through August. Um, that's why nothing is hitting during the month of July for revenues. Onto page twenty-seven expenditures, general fund expenditures. We have five hundred and seventeen thousand in general fund expenditures, uh, which is three point three five of the budgeted fifteen point four million dollars in general fund expenditures. And fund balance on page thirty-one. We have an ending fund balance on July thirty-first of two point two million in the general fund. Page ninety, school nutrition. Has, school nutrition has ended the month with two hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars. Page one hundred, local projects. We began the month with two point nine million. We had expenditures of three hundred and ninety thousand, leaving us with a balance up in the local projects account of just over two point five million. Page one oh four, the money market account. We have just over a million dollars. And page one oh six, the Georgia Fund One account. We began the month with one point three million. We had East Bloss receipts of a hundred and sixty-three thousand, leaving us with one point five million in the Georgia Fund One account.
And that's where it will pay the lease payment out.
Excuse me?
That's where we'll get the lease payment money out.
That's correct.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other questions?
None?
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. All right, next item up here, uh, discussion of the minutes from the previous meeting. Again, it'd be to take a look at those, uh, at your leisure and let either Ms. Lane or myself know and we'll make adjustments as necessary. Um, last board meeting, we put several items on the agenda and to put them on for thirty days. I also mentioned at that time that we would look to add an additional, um, use of school facilities in graph form. It is truly a graph form. If you will take a look at it and give me your feedback. I, I also added our agreement to it and if you can probably find the agreement that we use right now, if you'll pull that out and take a look at it and primarily look at the second page. And look at the dates that are on there. And so the policy is two, the existing policy is two thousand and two or something like that. Um, and then was reviewed again in, in two thousand and eight. This particular one is a schedule of fees. And so when you see the schedule of fees, if you are somebody that, uh, that wants to use the gym, for example, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars flat. Well, that particular policy again was, or, or practice was August of two thousand and seven, so it's, it's old. Um, but I also will tell you that most places, uh, that I've experienced, will charge that an hour. I mean, it's, uh, we need to review the prices that, that we're actually charging for the use of these facilities. I think it's great that we can provide our community with certain items, uh, the access to these, but at the same point, there has to be somebody to unlock the gate, somebody to unlock the door, somebody to lock those doors when they're done, somebody to clean up, security, et cetera, that we need to also make sure that we're putting into these schedules as we move forward. So, uh, again, these are very tentative drafts and, um, just look at those, let us know your thoughts and we'll come back to them. On the other ones, uh, Madam Chair and, and board, you know, you'll find items eight, which is a possession of weapons by employees. Items nine is a health and physical education. Item ten is unstructured break time. Item eleven is the divisive concepts complaint resolution. And then you have, um, items twelve, which is material harmful to minors complaint resolution. And then item thirteen is appearance of rights. All of those were, had been set on the table for the thirty-day review. Um, that thirty-day review, we're hoping will come next week when we, um, when we meet again. And so if you, like anything else, it's offered to the public, it's on the website for anyone that wants to provide input, but as the board looks at them as well, if you'll let us know any changes that might be necessary.
Just out of curiosity, have we gotten any comments from the community mainly about the weapons by employees?
I have not.
Okay.
Had a single inquiry. In fact, I've, um, regarding it in the negative, I've had positive comments making it. All right, any questions on any of those from the board? All right, if not, our next area is the facility. Uh, Mr. Masa, if you don't mind stepping up again.
All right, and next on the li- agenda is resolution for a five-years facility plan. As you know, we all, we earn money from the, the Department of Education has our facility pages. Every five years, we have to submit a five-year facilities plan that will allow us to access the money that we've earned over a, a period of time. So before you this evening, you'll see a resolution that officially requests, um, the Department of Education to start the process with us. It will, um, give you an idea that we, we'll have some meetings with them and develop the plan. Notably, that the next big item of is the roof at the high school. Um, we will earn some money for that and put that in the plan as well as a few other projects to discuss, um, moving forward, so.
So Mr. Masa brought up the roof. I understand that we, we earn money on various items. We earn money on a roof after twenty years. Then they calculate a variety of different ways. We are, would be lucky if we end up receiving, uh, six hundred thousand for the roof, but we anticipate that will be upwards of, closer to two million by the time we get to it. So in our yearly, thank you ma'am, uh, in our yearly budget that we talked about already, we're putting money aside to make sure that we can pay for that. That's part of our five-year budget plan.
So the process goes throughout the year and we develop this facilities plan. And it will entail meeting with, um, the Department of Education, contacting our architect, filling out some of the required paperwork in the portal and then having a facilities review, a virtual facilities review. We've got a clear timeline on that. We will be, um, diligent and be able to access that money when, when the time is right. Next, we have the next school year's projects. We have a lot of projects scheduled, everybody.
Uh, so just to kind of give the board a little taste of where we're at. Obviously, the, the middle school kitchen project is going on right now. Todd Grant has had the renovation, they, they had the painting this summer. Last year, we had MCA, we made some changes in there. Uh, the middle school still needs some changes and so it's on our five-year budget to paint the hallways and the classrooms again. Um, I'd like to start looking at estimates of renovating the gym. Uh, that gym is old. The bleachers are, I would, thanks for saying, very close to being unsafe. They, they're rickety, uh, a, a dangerous issue of full amount. We need to look to possibly change out those bleachers. They're expensive. Um, and so somewhere along the line, if we're gonna do that, let's make sure we do it full right. Let's make sure we get rid of those curtains that are, that are not our school colors, et cetera, and let's make that right. But we still gotta get in there and make sure we do all the painting. I want to build some, some, uh, estimates along the way so that, not this school year, this is for the next school year that we're getting together. And on top of that, we need to look at fencing and, and the restrooms at the football field that's there. They're not eighty-eight compliant and so we have some issues. We need to look at renovations there and, you know, some other minor things that are happening. But I, I'm just to give a little taste of what we're looking at. And on top of that, um, the board would, by that time, make a decision on our growth. We should have a new kitchen project up. And so the kitchen that's in existence right now, uh, we've talked about raising that. And so we'll just have to start looking at budgeting for that. Any questions at all about what we perceive the potential for next year's? I appreciate. Okay, I appreciate that.
Very systematic plan to make sure that all of our facilities throughout the county are a, as nice as they can be, and it's really coming together. Next on our list is the solar panels project. I'm so excited to finally report that all the solar panels are up and, um, starting to collect energy. Now, they haven't been hooked to the grid yet, they've still got the next step of getting approval through Georgia Power and, um, jumping through some of those hoops, but the actual hard labor of putting the panels secure into the roof ha- has been done. If you've got a chance to see the W O T O C article, it was a great drone shot at the top of the school where you could see those panels, I've got some plenty of video footage of that. Um, again, we're so close to actually, um, coming to realize some of the savings that we've been promised, so that's a, a real feather in our cap. We are contributing to going green, reducing our carbon footprint, and look forward to having, um, the educational aspect tied in with that, and letting our kids and our community know that we're, we're stepping up to the plate in that area, so we're close. Um, just be patient, you hear the power, and we should be realizing savings.
We realize that there are nearly nine hundred solar panels between Todd Grant and the middle school. Um, and again, they're all in place, and we're just, it, it didn't cost us a dime.
Wow.
Not a dime, so our, our savings comes from a reduced electric bill.
So they're done, we, we just wait, we're just waiting on the savings.
They have to do some wiring, and then we're waiting on Georgia Power to give it the blessing, and then the, the switch is flipped.
Yes, just so that we're, we're all on the same page, that they do have to hook the wiring up, they're waiting on some parts that were backordered, but all done, meaning that all the panels are up, secured to the wall, just ready to be hooked to the grid with, and Georgia Power approving that. Next is the McIntosh County's kitchen project. Man, I tell you, what I'm really impressed with is our partnership with the construction group. As you can see, that they've, um, been very conscious of our schedule, they did their work they needed to do by ripping up all they needed to in the parking lot, and they cleaned up, and, and we're ready for school, even though that we've got a huge kitchen project going on in the school. So, um, they're working really hard, we are meeting with Atlantic Gas on next week to move some of the gas pipes around.
This week, this week?
This week, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, I mean tomorrow. Um, ne- this Wednesday, to move some of those pipes around, and, um, the kitchen hood has gone in there. Um, all the car, concrete has been replaced, and they've ripped up all the, uh, uh, grease pits, everything's in. Now it's, um, turning to the interior and really, uh, buckling down on getting that done. So the kitchen progress, project is coming along famously, we're, we're really ready to see it come to fruition. We just know that, um, our biggest, um, drawback or what's holding us back is supply chain. Getting the parts that we need to actually finish up is, is what's holding us back, not a lack of effort or, or, it's, it's a great project, it's going to be real better.
What is the projected date, do they have a date? Mine is the coolers, or the freezers or whatever.
Yes, um, the date's changed a little bit, you know, but we're looking at October.
I, I would tell you it's October, because I've already had the discussion, I was sitting there with Mr. Maso, something different. Um, the, the original windows that we had to put in because of supply, six weeks. So we're going to end up probably, once the air conditioning gets done this week, they, they project that to happen, they'll finish up the electrical work, and then, um, they'll put the window frames up, but the windows themselves, we're looking at mid-September, you know, put those in. And then the other equipment there, most of it will be ready to come in, the survey lines and stuff, but we have some that are, still aren't going to come in until late September. Um, the biggest issue is that cooler freezer, which won't be here until March, February, March.
Wow. However, even without the cooler freezer, if, if everything else is done, we still can be doing business in there, so that, that's a real opportunity ahead of us. And then...
Before you leave that, let me throw some kudos out to the city water department guys, they've really gone above and beyond as well, and, uh, I know that we as a district appreciate them.
Absolutely, absolutely, very much so.
I was going to get to that at the, uh, when we talked about the Boys' and Girls' Club, because just so we know, there, where is a water problem?
Yeah, those guys put in like...
We found a pipe that nobody knew existed. And, and the water was flowing, and, uh, and I, I think after talking to Donnie, Donnie couldn't tell him when that pipe was in there, but it still had water flowing through it. Uh, and they, they worked with us in, in being able to cap it off in, in an, I would consider it almost an antiquated, an old pipe, uh, that nobody knows where it goes to, but they, they really did help us out.
Good.
I bet it's on the map now, right?
Where the cat is.
Yeah, you know where the cat is on the map.
No, no, I would tell you later on where that water came from, because it wasn't from us.
Last on the list is Todd Grant painting project, so, so happy, even though that we had a, uh, little hiccup in that, it was complete, and we can say that a hundred percent of our school is painted. Uh, I'm really proud of that, and we've also learned some lessons in, in that, meaning that moving forward, that teachers won't be using tape on the walls, and, uh, we learned that from our painters, that it's better to put a thumb tack in a wall, and we can mud over that real quick, rather than when you pull some of the tape off that they use, that's heavy duty, pulling big strips of, uh, the drywall and the vacuum off. So, um, and everything happens for a reason, I think that paint job is going to last a long time, and it looks so bright. We have a new school again, in my opinion, if they did a really good job. I also just want to take a second to, um, highlight KBS that worked so hard through all that, it, it, they've had to juggle painters in there and, and all the things that happened. If you go into Todd Grant, to any of our schools, I think our floors look amazing this year, better than they have in, in many years. They used a new formula, a new, um, technique, and it worked, and again, they worked hard through a, a lot of challenging situations. Um, and thank the teachers for being as patient as they are, I know they wanted to get in those classrooms and do the work that they needed to do, and, and they were patient. Um, I hope that they'll see the, uh, beauty of their school and see that man was worth the, the way, because they're, they're coming into something I consider top-notch, you know, that's...
I, I would like to mention, just because we did have the communications issue, that the painting is concluded, the walls look fantastic, um, and we're still under budget. And so I just wanted to make sure we said that, we are under budget.
Were the teachers able to get their classrooms set up before they started their meetings? Because I know they have a full week of meetings, and that was my concern there, because I know, oh, how elementary teachers are, you've got to get those ABCs up.
You know, it pushed the limit.
We, we pushed the limit, but we did open up, um, sections of the school, it wasn't the, the whole school down there, were some teachers that obviously didn't because their classrooms were last, but the, there was plenty of sections that were open, and, and we, we moved around. And there's two days of training, but there's also some days that are still built in there for teachers to be in their room for classrooms, um, for them to be working. We have open house and a short district meeting the rest of the time is for them at the schools, and, um, the principals are very conscious of that, and are allowing them to get in there, if they need to do it. Again, very appreciative of the, uh, work around.
Any questions for Mr. Maso? All right, uh, if you'll give a quick update on COVID?
Well, again, um, we're in a really good position, we're starting off the year, that we don't have any active COVID cases that I am aware of. Um, again, I'll say this, like I say every time, that our guard is knocked down, we're still starting off the year with, uh, providing masks for students if they choose, it's parents discretion. We will have hand sanitizer in entrances of all the buildings, and we're still acting like, um, we are prepared for any situation with, with, uh, meaning that our hurdles haven't changed. We're doing, we're doing what's right to stay clean, keep our hands washed, and, um, stay ahead of this, we're, we're watching it very closely.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Next item up there, and if you don't mind, just stay right there, Mr. Maso, in this case, we have some questions, uh, security, school security update. If you'll pull that up, I'm going to go through this, uh, relatively quickly, but I want to make sure that the public understands that we take security extremely, uh, i- is of extreme importance to us. We want to make sure we do everything to protect our students, our staff, our faculty, and our visitors. Next one, please. So some of the things we've already added, um, adding key swipes to exterior doors, the middle school is almost completed for those areas, and that we expect that the, um, elementary school would have those. And the, here's the, here's the, the primary reasons we're doing that. We want to eliminate as best as possible any need to block a door open, especially an exterior door. And so in this case, with the card swipe, teachers will have the access to be able to do that and be able to get into a building versus blocking it out, if they go to the playground and they go outside or stuff that nature. We're also adding those door sensors, and they're being installed, almost completed at the middle school, we'd love to do that at, uh, at Todd Grant as well. But if a door's ajar for a period of time, it'll send a message to the administration and the SRO, there was a jar, so we don't fall into that same realm of a, of a door being left open unexpectedly. Um, we're also looking to close the gates down here on the highway, so that af- at eight fifteen, once the primary, uh, drop-off has been done, then that means those are closed, and people would come around to the Village Road if they had the need to drop a student off or come for an appointment. Then at two fifteen, we'll open it back up, people will line up, they get to go through Car Rider Pro, line up, et cetera. What that does for us is several things. One is that it, for that inconvenience, and I, and I know that is an inconvenience, we, we are able to make sure that we have a single point of entry, again, for the campus, as well as when you start looking at people who walk through our campus, we find them almost daily, where they'll walk through, they'll walk up by the sidewalks, by the school, they'll walk through the cars. Um, and again, this will, this will prevent them from doing so unless they decide to jump the fence, and then I'm sure Charlie will respond in kind. So, um, as well, I will tell you that we have, uh, active shooter res- responses that need to take place, we're training our employees. We have A-specific trainings universally applied, I finished mine today, and again, we're asking every employee in the school system, every employee, to take part in that training. And then, uh, we had our receptionist, or anybody that sits at a counter, we wanted to make sure they went through some specialized training, because if an event ever takes place, that call typically goes to the receptionist to say, we've got a problem. And so how they respond in those first thirty seconds dictates how the rest of it unfolds in many, many cases, we want to make sure they're good. We've added some fencing in various locations, uh, strategic locations to enhance security as well. Uh, one of the findings that came out of Givaldi from, from the state was that their four and five-foot fences just weren't tall enough to be able to preclude any incident from taking place. But as well, we wanted to make sure that we have, especially the playground, that that's blocked off, and that we've, uh, we've tightened up a few other areas to make sure that's done. And, um, we have some gates so, to provide some single entry points, so that, like at the high school, the back gate's going to be locked. Uh, that's again, going to be an inconvenience, but we're expecting parents, uh, to go around to the front in order to pick up their, their students. And that visitors that come in or people have deliveries, there'd be a sign on it with a number saying they can call, and we'll have a campus, uh, monitor go out and unlock the gate and make sure that's taken care of. Uh, the incident that we recognized our officers, um, earlier for took, took place on King Swamp Road. And so, you know, that's close proximity to our high school, more the reason why we want to make sure that we, we continue to have security taken. We do have sentecous alert system throughout, and again, um, I don't know if they have those in this room at all.
Oh, yeah.
It's above your head, that's it, right there, so that's a sentecous alarm, if that flashes, has different colors, uh, that's, the employees have a button they can push, and it alerts them to various situations. It locks down your computers, tells them there's an issue. We're also looking to possibly change that to a less expensive program that is universally applied as well, um, called LECs, and we're preparing with that, and we expect that that might be, other school systems farther south are using it, and, and it's very, very productive. All right, next one. We also have an anonymous reporting system, I've asked the principals and, and Mr. Maso, we need to get that out, we need to get word out that if somebody sees something, that they need to say something, and that includes you, students, parents, anyone, so that they can report it anonymously, and then we respond to it. We're adding cameras to, uh, the classrooms, many of the classrooms already have them, but we want to make sure that we have that, and, you know, there's, there are numerous advantages to that. Uh, teachers automatically, uh, if there are issues in the classroom, have to request it, and, and Mr. Boone knows, he has to get permission from me to look into those classrooms to see if anything's going on. We would, we do have trained in armed SROs in all three campuses, and I think that's a benefit to us, and, and we're, we are encouraged by the collaboration and, um, the effort that we have with the sheriff's office, we work well together. That campus monitor, we talked about, that campus is so different at the high school, somebody to rotate and toss and make sure that each, every hour, that doors are open and closed, that we're making sure that somebody's checking, make sure they're still closed interior-wise. Um, as I mentioned as well, that extensive collaboration with local law enforcement, our drill schedule's set, we hold them, everybody knows what they are, and, you know, when, when you look at the issues that take place where schools who don't have these drills, who don't pay attention to them, students don't know how to react. So we want to make sure that instinctively they know, this is what I'm supposed to do in the event of something. As well, when you do those drills, you find problems, and you solve those problems to prepare for the next time around. Doors, windows locked, and no parking around the building, I'll have a conversation with every staff and faculty member, uh, in the next couple of weeks, and I'm going out to visit them along with law enforcement to say, here's why you need to make sure you comply. And that complacency that has been, um, in various school systems that, that lowers the standards, we're making sure we bring that to their attention. That has been a requirement that we've had in place, we want to make sure of it, especially though now, making sure no parking around the buildings, and no propping open the doors, I think everybody has, has seen that. Next one, please. Um, unfortunate that we have to worry about this, but I think it's vital that we also do have a stop-the-bleak kits in every fire extinguisher, replace those in every particular location, and we want to train every employee on how to use those. And so, uh, in event of a, of a tragic situation like that, and, and I say this, you know, we place a lot of focus, and the news places a lot of focus on, uh, an active shooter situation. But the, the, the issues that unfold are ten times larger, if not more, about other incidents that take place in the school system, such as suicides. And so, um, we need to make sure that our folks know how to respond to those particular situations. Uh, all exterior windows are to be labeled with a number, so we know if, if emergency vehicles have to come, they know exterior-wise what, what room they're going to. Um, I, we put crash pillars in front of the middle school and the high school, and so if you've looked at that, you know, you could technically, if you were somebody that had a little bad day and planned to do something evil, they could have driven right straight down Buccaneer Trail and right into the front of McIntosh Academy, uh, same thing with, with the middle school, they could drive right through to the lobby. We have now those particular crash pillars there that would stop that and prevent them from being able to, to go into the building. The, um, the need still exists to construct, I call it a containment, but a vestibule area at the high school, we're getting estimates together on that. Uh, that's something, again, that would, I envisioned, we'd have a, a, once they get buzzed through the first area, there'd be another containment area, they go into the waiting room. Once they know their business is legitimate, then there's another door that allows them to go into the actual campus, um, and after they've been checked and, and signed in, et cetera. We do want to train and arm employees to support our SROs in their endeavor. If you think about the process that would take place if an active shooter took place at any of the schools, the SRO should be engaged. It takes usually about three minutes for other law enforcement to arrive on average. In our case, I'd hope that that would be much sooner, but we also know that with others in the vi- building that are armed, that they would be able to respond far quicker, um, in order to aid our SROs in that endeavor. And so, system-wide communications, the radios, we're, we're forcing that when teachers go out to the playground, they have a radio, they need to be able to communicate back and forth, and that goes throughout the entire district, as well as if chatter's out there, uh, their ability to override and, if there's an emergency, and we've placed those radios throughout the entire school district in, and included on our buses and central office. Visitor check-in system in all schools, that's again, something that the elementary school was doing, but now we put that at the middle school and at the high school as well, so that when somebody comes in, they have to show a valid ID, valid ID is then checked against the database to make sure they don't have any problems. Next one, please. Um, law enforcement, we're asking them to get in our schools, we want to make sure they, they know what the hallways look like, what do the doors look like, what is, what are their communications, how they activate, you know, how, how do they support each other in our schools and know, um, the makeup of them. And that's, uh, something we're working with the law enforcement folks as, as well as our, um, emergency management folks, so everybody, everybody clearly knows, it's not the first time they've entered Todd Grant if a situation takes place. Um, I didn't put it on here, but we're going to put those Knox boxes with the, the ability for, during emergencies, to get in, and they can have access to get into rooms as well. So, uh, similarly to Givaldi, I think the truth will come out sooner or later regarding that, whether the wall was locked or not locked, or who had the keys, et cetera, we're going to try to prove that to make sure during those emergencies, situations, there's a key available. We're gonna try to preclude that to make sure during those emergency situations, there's a key available. And then, we started our first initial threat assessment team last week. That included members of local law enforcement, members from our counselors and medical and mental health folks, administration, talking about concerns that we may have so that we can continue to start monitoring those. Our mental health monitoring that we're gonna put in place, that's an issue. It's on the rise. We're very concerned about that, we have been concerned about it and now we just need to take some actions to make sure that we're actively monitoring those situations. We wanna make sure as well that our safety plans are approved and we do have approved plans before we get into the year. Mr. Moss has worked with them. All three of our schools have those plans, they're documented, they're placed at the nine-one-one center and at sheriff's office as well as with any school. And it's not a plan that just collects dust. It is actively there for them to look at and go through everything. And the last one that I have here, and I'm reaching out to our board attorney to reach out to Judge Russell, we need to hold a stakeholder meeting dealing with safety in attendance and that's something that's required by law and I think that we need to go ahead and pull people together and in view of everything that happened in Yvaldi, a lot of lessons come out and this is a great opportunity for us to pull together and say, "What did we miss? What else do we need to do?" It's one thing for the school system to look at it and for, you know, law enforcement to look at it, but there are other people involved as well that need to come to the table. Key controls, something else that's not listed here and we'll add that as well. But we wanna make sure that if a key is out there for a former employee or something along that line, we need to make sure we're getting that taken care of. That's a lot of information, but I want our parents to understand and our students and staff and faculty to understand that we take this seriously and we wanna make sure that we're doing everything possible for them to have a safe learning environment and that they can get the education that they deserve. Any questions on any of that? All right, thank you. All right, next item up here, Madam Chair, I do have some personnel, we'll do an executive session. And we'll have some additional security, we'll talk in executive session. Would like to just mention on item E1, we've already done. On item two, Boys and Girls Club, if you've not seen the advertisement and if you did not see the WTOC highlight of it, but the club that they have renovated, they put about four hundred thousand dollars in this place and it looks fantastic. And so, if you get an opportunity to come out on August eleventh, that's the grand opening, between eleven and two, the ribbon cutting's at eleven. Lot of investment, lot of great things that Boys and Girls Club have done. They are providing an opportunity for students in this community to have a safe place to go. The next item up there, system, excuse me, open house. We have announced, can you pull up the hours and anybody that's looking at this, not to lose their number and be able to visit. We have separated these, staggered these so that if somebody has a child at each or maybe two of the schools they're able to attend. Open house is from four to six at Todd Grant. It's at five to seven for the middle school and six to eight at the high school. I will, I do wanna emphasize when we talk about security that open house is when parents come to meet teachers. It's not the first day of school. And so, doors will be locked, they can schedule an appointment. I know that that is one of the most vulnerable times during school hours if people try to go through the threshold to go down to a classroom. So, we wanna make sure that, again, come to open house, spend the time you need to and visit your teachers, but come first day of school, we're doing the same protocol. You have to get checked in, have to have an appointment to get down into the school. All right, so. Next item up here, system-wide meeting, it's this Friday. Board, you're welcome to attend. We do have a breakfast that starts at eight, eight forty-five, that'll conclude, we'll move into the auditorium. We have some mandatory training that needs to take place and we're also gonna recognize our employees that have been in our system for twenty-five or plus years. And so, our own Ms. Elsie Lane will be recognized with how many years, thirty-eight? Thirty-seven, thirty-seven years. And we're recognizing, not just in education, we're recognizing Anne McIntosh. That's on camera too.
Moving right along.
Friday night, we have our first football game scrimmage in Long County. If you can join us, we're in Long County, we're looking forward to that. And we also have softball game that's kicking off on August eighth at Cavalry Day. And the last items I have here are the dedication of events that, you know, Ms. Brown, we are going to rededicate the media center at Todd Grant. We've tentatively set a date of August thirty-first in order to contact and get that done, but we want to rededicate that. The flow of Reggie Jackson is August twenty-fourth, that's scheduled at ten o'clock in the morning. And then, we've scheduled Mother Hunter for August the thirtieth and we're trying to nail down the time to do that. Along with the issue that I mentioned with the Boys and Girls Club, just officially announced, the state board approved the Twenty-First Century Grant that the Boys and Girls Club put in for our kindergarten through second grade. The allocation of that is an after-school program of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for up to five years. So, you're looking at well over, what is that, one point seven million dollars, around that, that goes into the development and that is the key age, and I've said this before, from zero to five at home and anything they can do to be read to. Once they get in our buildings, we're talking from pre-K to second when we're teaching them how to read. And that's, that's part of this is that early literacy and that after-school and everything that goes into it. So, we're excited and we're really very fortunate to have the Boys and Girls Club put so much effort into doing this program for us. I think, Madam Chair and the board, we've just, we've covered an awful lot of information tonight. I do have, like I said, some information in executive session for personnel and security.
All right, could I have a motion to go to executive session for personnel and security? Ms. McDonald, second. Second, Mr. Straggles. All those in favor? Motion carries, five zero. I think y'all both said that, I heard him. Did you hear? McDonald, Straggles. Okay, we will return. Okay, the McIntosh County Board of Education had adjourned to executive session to discuss security and personnel. Could I have a motion to return to open session? Motion by Mr. McAvoy, second, Ms. McDonald, all those in favor? Motion carries, five zero. Okay, superintendent recommends personnel report as submitted. Can I have a motion? Motion by Ms. McDonald, second. Second by Mr. McAvoy, all those in favor? Motion carries, five zero. All right, board comment.
I'm just excited about the new school year and welcome everybody back and we'll see how school, that's the one.
Welcome back, let's do it.
Welcome back.
Right, welcome back. Decided about a new, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, you got it, man.
New year and all the, so many good things happening. Very informative meeting tonight and brought us up speed on a lot of great opportunities. Glad to be a part of it. Go ahead, sir.
Another thank you to deputies Payne and Stark for a job well done. These, all of these law enforcement officers go above and beyond.
They do.
And thank you, I mean, that's our, that's our first line of defense, you know, right here in our community. And thank you to our teachers. They go above and beyond and we had some good numbers from last year and I know we'll have even better numbers this year. I do believe it. But, Madam Chair, that's all I have, thank you.
I just wanna remind our parents to talk to their children about summer reading requirements before school starts, so there's still a little bit of time left, but they need to have already accomplished that before they step back into school.
I made a mistake. It was Deputy Finley. I apologize. Thank you, Madam Chair, being here keeping me straight.
You're welcome, it's my job.
Deputy Finley.
Well, I did see some of the teacher form that runs today, it was a group of people running around and they're all powered up and ready to go back.
Yeah, they are, I saw some, they're excited.
So, I can talk to some of them, called part of my tribe before I stopped by. They're all powered up and ready to go back.
All right.
Let's go Bucks.
Go Bucks.
We adjourn.